Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Ready, and let's call the meeting to order at 5:33. Jigs, would you lead us on the approach?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands in the name of the Constitution, the Constitution of Justice and of Law.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Um, I just, um, Deb Cardane, um, just with where we were Friday and everything and had previous arrangements, and she won't be here to be able to talk about assessments, but she will be here the next one. So we just, I know that's on there.
So we need to postpone that too.
Yeah, so.
Um, we can probably do that as part of the budget meeting if the members are okay with that. Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Chris, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else that needs adjusting? Okay, so communications and public comment.
Don't see anyone online?
Okay. Um, review and approvals from, yes, September 21st and the December 5th, but I have not seen the December 5th minutes. I've asked for them, but that was our budget meeting. So we need to postpone that set.
But we can do the other, right?
Right. November 21st. Um, I saw a couple of things, but I'll let you guys go first. Uh, Chris, do you have any adjustments?
No, I didn't have anything on that.
No.
I didn't know.
Jim, okay. Um, on page five, if we can note that the motion into executive session was unanimously approved, Chris had made a point earlier in the meeting to, um, note that that needs to be when they are. So we need that added. Other than that, I didn't see anything. So we'll just approve the minutes as corrected. Uh, reports superintendent?
Um, I gave out my report at the SU meeting last Wednesday, um, but just I can kind of go over briefly. Um, we provided, um, all board members with this organizational chart and SU employees. I updated it, Chris. Um, and then, um, we also, uh, um, just a brief on the, on pre-K expansion. Uh, we had put together a committee to kind of look at ways to expand our pre-K offerings in our buildings. And the committee determined based on the feasibility study and the Medicaid dollars that we have that we could expand pre-K by one classroom without additional cost to taxpayers. Um, in that additional classroom, we could provide pre-K to students five days a week. Currently, they alternate, um, on, on Tuesdays and, and like a group of three-year-olds come on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and another group comes Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Uh, but we would be able to operate all of our sites five days a week for the whole school day. Um, and so, um, and then, um, I just wanted to make the boards aware of professional development that, uh, Deb Cardane has been putting together for teachers. Um, we had a, excuse me, a day right before the break Thanksgiving, um, and it was very well received. Um, uh, we put together a, a, a teacher effectiveness and supervision plan, um, when the previous administration had moved away from the model that we were using, um, and just moving to a model that was just all walkthroughs and didn't provide any formal observations. So we wanted to build one end that did both walkthroughs and formal evaluations. Um, and so principals have been working on that. We spent today talking about that and making sure we're meeting the needs of, of teachers and supervising. Uh, security updates. Uh, we just recently learned, um, the AOE is allowing, um, safety upgrades, um, under ESER. And so, uh, we originally had gone to the SU board to use current funds, uh, to do that project, but we're rolling that into ESER. Um, so that will be dollars that will eventually, um, go back to the different districts, um, and, and for you guys to make decisions on what you want to do as far as, uh, those dollars. Um, and then, um, we just, we're, um, moving, um, with out with a new attendance procedure, um, and that's based on the Wyndham County attendance best practices. Um, and so principals will be sending home information to parents, um, just about how those, uh, practices will be implemented. It's just helping to standardize us across all of our six schools, uh, currently. Um, COVID really didn't help it. Um, there was a moratorium put on notifications and stuff like that. And, um, and so, um, uh, Wyndham County, all of the districts in Wyndham County got together and they kind of formed this best practice and it just didn't get rolled out. Uh, we found out about it this year, so we're rolling it out. Um, but, um, parents will get information. It would just be about updating them when, um, students are absent and, and the steps we are going to take to school to work with the parents to get kids to school. Um, we are, um, floating out there a draft of the calendar for next school year. Um, we did talk today about adding early release days in, so we're going to look to populate that. Um, we'll have that up, um, on our website, um, after the new year for public comment. Um, but basically just to let parents know kind of when we're looking at school starting and, um, you know, when the holiday breaks will be and whatnot. Um, and then we are rolling out, um, some student prevention protocol. Um, David Bingham and, um, the school, David Bingham is a school clinician at Westminster Center School, and Mark Givo and Andrea Carlson, who's school councilor at the high school, have been working with U Matters, um, which is a national organization about student leadership and, um, engagement. And so that group got a larger grant to push it out to K through eight. Um, so we are looking to push that out. Um, and again, standardize our responses across our six buildings. Uh, so if there is a student who has a threat to themselves, um, there's a standard protocol that we'll follow in all buildings. Um, and that if a student is a threat to others, um, we're following a standard, uh, operating procedure of how we're going to address that issue. And then also if there's a non-suicidal self-injury, uh, so that's often, um, what you might hear is cutting. Um, um, some students will cut or do other self-injurious types of, um, uh, activities and that necessarily aren't there, they're not about suicide, but they're about other pieces. And so again, how we respond to those to make sure that we've got that universal response, um, is, is really important. Um, and then, let's see, um, we've got, um, bids out on, on the roof projects here, um, uh, for the middle school and for Central. Um, I, I believe something came in, uh, since I last put this out, um, on the kitchen bid, so that might be moving forward. Um, and we're still waiting on some other pieces. Uh, we've been interviewing for the clerk of the works. Um, I'm still looking to fill that position. Um, and then I provided, um, the SU board with goals, um, for this current year. Um, and then also asked the board if they could provide me with a tool for evaluation. Um, and then I just have our attendance numbers, um, which I know our, our folks go over. So these, these numbers are, uh, December 1st, so they, they adjusted up there. The month.
Any questions? Yes, Jim?
Well, I was in, I went on the SU board and I, I expressed my concern about this early ed expansion. Uh, uh, I, I had previous to the board meeting, uh, asked you and Andy to put that subject on our agenda for early January, or January, uh, because, you know, and I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at the SPEC results. Andy sent them out today. We're going to postpone that discussion until,
January.
Until January.
Till the first thing in January, yes.
Definitely.
Yes.
Deb would, would be here to do that. And, and my, my position is, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm always been in favor of early education. Uh, but as I look at, at our schools right now, I see that the, the best performing groups in our, in our schools are the K through two group. And three, three, and then four, five, six, seven, and eight, it just falls off the table. And I think that the, um, that the focus, uh, should be results-based. We should make decisions that are, that are fiscally responsible, but results-based. And I don't think that this has been put through that process. Uh, the SU board has not been presented with anything, any kind of proposal, other than this committee, this ad hoc committee, which has some board members on it, uh, recommended it. The other, the other part of it that is really kind of not true is that, uh, there is a cost to this. And, and the, uh, as you know, Priscilla and others, that Rockingham picks up, you know, sixty, seventy percent of the cost of early education. We have a, a surplus of Medicaid funds because the, uh, administration to, to, in two previous years had made a mistake and not applied those funds to early education. So there is a cost. Uh, the, as soon as the Medicaid funds run out, then obviously it's going to come back to the, to the schools, to the, to the towns and taxpayers. And so I think to, to describe it as a no-cost program that's essential is, is a stretch. And I think that it needs to be vetted. Uh, and I think that since we host at least one of the classrooms, uh, in, in one of our buildings, uh, that, uh, that this board should have, uh, an opinion, uh, on this, on this. So I raised that, that issue. The other, the other one was, I looked at superintendent calls and I wasn't very impressed because I didn't think they had anything significant in it, uh, in the, uh, dealing with student results. I mean, that's what's basic. That's why we're here. We're here for, uh, for excellence in education and, uh, and measuring the results that our kids. And, uh, so I think the, uh, of course, I didn't have anything to do with this, this current years. And of course, I'm not on the executive committee, so I really don't have much of anything on the boardroom. But I think definitely we should, we should at least present the superintendent with some additional goals, other than the ones that are on there now, which are, you know, kind of soft. There, you know, there, there's nothing bad about, you know, having material ahead of time for a meeting is a good thing. Uh, we could improve on that. Uh, and, uh, and a few other things, communication is obviously very important, not only to the boards, but to the parents. Uh, but, uh, but I think we need to, you know, to me, uh, something like the, the leadership in our schools is critical and student results are critical. And I think those need to be reflected in the, in the goals. So those are my, the other, the other one that I think was mentioned, uh, is I know everybody's anxious and Jim's here tonight, so I, I know everybody's anxious to get an update on when, uh, when the audit report will be available for 2022. So anyway.
Um, Chris?
Hi, um, I don't, don't really want to start a debate, but, um, I just want to counter a little bit Jim's, uh, perspective on, uh, the use of Medicaid funds for early ed. It's, it's not a mutually exclusive choice. Um, we can have a quality, and we do, very high-quality early ed program that for many years has given us good results, and that's part of why we're doing well in K through two. Uh, and, uh, and, you know, we can have some, uh, remediation for some of these older kids that have been, uh, you know, kind of left out in the cold a little bit with the COVID problem. It's, one doesn't have to be without the other. And I don't know why Jim keeps saying that, you know, you have to make one choice or the other. The other thing is the, um, Medicaid money is still being collected. It's, it's, it's not going to run out, uh, but it will in time presumably get back to a point where, uh, it may not cover all of the early ed expenses and we'll go back to having some portion of it as an assessment. So yes, Jim is correct that some point, as it has, has, we'll, we'll have an assessment, but, um, but it's not like Medicaid is, is stopping coming in. We're still collecting Medicaid. That's it.
Thank you. Kate Lynch, do you have anything?
Um, I don't think so. I mean, it's, I think it's also, uh, helpful for me to get a sense and getting to know like which board's responsibilities overlap with which one. So I appreciate hearing more of that.
If you can let me know. No, no, I mean, it's, it's juggling that, like, you know.
Yeah.
There were four meetings left and stuff.
Yeah, but I, I appreciate hearing some of those pieces where there is some overlap. I'm also curious about, I'm, I'm very excited to hear from Deb about the assessment results and start to understand a little bit of what might be underneath and where we can start to think about targeting supports for students who are not showing as strong results and thinking about what role each of us and the superintendent's role, all of our roles in supporting kids and being able to reach proficiency.
I, I think my concern with the pre-K situation is that we have twenty-six Rockingham children. Um, right now, uh, half of them are going to Central and half of them are going to Westminster. So if we have a little expansion for those children, we can maybe address some of the early situations that would make them less out to need special ed leader, which could cut down on that is my hope. Um, and my understanding is that doing the additional classroom in Central, if we do that, um, we can use the same teacher so we don't need another teacher. We already got a teacher. And, um, we may need some extra, an extra pair or something, but it would help. But we do have a pretty hefty amount right now. So I think that's something that we've got to concern, you know, and, and how do we utilize it? And I'm hearing concerns on both sides. I'm hearing Jim, would, would I, you know, good questions. And I'm hearing Chris, you know, with, with telling us that, you know, there are funds. Of course, if we get the special ed down, we may need to get less funds coming in too. So it's a kind of a circular kind of thing.
Well, so.
That's great.
That would be nice.
Um, yeah.
And so, so I tried to do some digging to understand, um, because I've spoken with other superintendents and, and, um, a lot of other districts actually offer pre-Ks just as an addition to the classroom. So there are pre, pre-K through four, pre-K through six, and, and that pre-K teacher is a member of the staff of that school and whatnot. And they're funded through Medicaid dollars and things of that nature and funded at the SU level. Um, you know, and we're, we have almost more of a consolidated model, much like special education, where, where, you know, if the irony is if we had had the space at like, if we were still at Cherry Hill and we were looking to add a classroom, we wouldn't be having all these debates. Because it's an SU program that the SU is just running. And the SU is, is finding a need and, and we've done a feasibility study that there's a group out there of untapped kids who need pre-K, um, now and needed five days a week as opposed to this alternating that we've had. And full day would be a benefit to parents. And, and again, if we were up at, if we still had Cherry Hill and we had, just said, we're going to take this room on the second floor and do this, we would just operate that way and just expand it based on the, the funds we had. So it's not a, you know, that we're trying to pass something through or, or do anything like that. We're, because we don't have that building anymore, the SU is always at the mercy of all the districts, um, for space. And that, that's, I mean, when, when we were leaving Cherry Hill and I was the director, I was told, go talk to principals and find space for my special educators. Um, you know, so if we, if we're gonna, I think it comes down to question of is Rockingham going to say, you know, because Westminster has indicated that they may be, they are looking into the fact that they want to locally fund a pre-K classroom and in their building. And I brought that up to them is what does it do in the sense, because the Medicaid funds comes to the SU and then get distributed out. So how does that get distributed out if they, if they have their own classroom? Does that mean that this, the classroom here is a Rockingham classroom? Is it an SU program even? So I mean, it, 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 it opens up a lot more questions, uh, for me in my head, as opposed to this is an SU program that's just borrowing space and buildings. So.
Yeah, because we have at least one from Brad Athens and, and four from Westminster. The rest are Rockingham.
The whole program began out of special education. And it, 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 it grew out of, um, a few directors ago, um, with understanding and seeing that they were providing a lot of special ed services to students. And you, and it actually, what, there was a classroom in Central that was, you know, you kind of had to sit with a fifty-one forty-nine, um, and has a special educator and, um, it was there. And then that director moved it from the classroom to the YMCA building. So it was always in, you know, just, it was a little more of this, how it more, but it grew out of what the needs of, of kids were. So.
I think, um, I, uh, I like the idea that it's, that it's run by the SU. Don't get me wrong. I'm not, I'm not looking to have this become a, just a rock, yeah, Rockingham ESER program. But I think if, if, if Westminster does something, whatever, then we might be faced with that. So I don't know. I mean, I mean, you're going to have to deal with that. But I think, uh, you know, we're certainly not, uh, part of those discussions and don't share those views. And, uh, so I think, uh, uh, as I said, I would like to see it continue to be a consolidated SU function. I just think that, that the, the SU board should be presented with a proposal as opposed to getting this ad hoc committee report that, uh, it's all, all good. We're going to go forward. And I, I don't think that's, I just don't think that's the right process. And I think that when it involves our buildings, uh, it does create a need for, for an additional step. And that is to reach out to the, to the school boards that are basically hosting, uh, these programs. So.
So I, I apologize, Jigs, but I think you're, you've got your cart well out in front of my horse. Because I was just, I was more because, because I was given a really hard time that I was not informing boards of the conversations that were happening. So I was updating the, the board as to where we were. So I haven't come forward with any proposal or anything of that nature yet. I just said, we've looked at it. We, this is what, what we'd like to do.
I interpret it as done to you. So I, I apologize. I, I.
Yeah, no, there's.
So it's clearly on, it must be a 2025 type of proposal, right?
No, it could be something that we could still put in place for next year. We, and I think we even said at the SU board meeting that we need to come back with additional things. There were some good questions asked there. What's the structure look like? All that. We, we have not gone that far as to where would three-year-olds be? Would they be at Westminster? Would three-year-olds be at, you know, like, I don't know. And, and, um, so there, there's still a lot of packaging to do to bring a package forward.
I, I think right now, um, the survey is out there and we're gathering data. And once that, we get that, that survey finished and, and, um, correlated, then we can look at what we're being told the needs are by the community. And then we can, um, you know, the committee has a meeting and we can bring an idea to the board and then we can discuss it at the board level here and see where we want to go. I do think that we have room at Central to be able to do this if, if that's what parents are telling us and that's what the board decides to do. But we have not made a final decision at this point. So, um, let's come back again in January and continue the discussion with, with the, on the preschool. Um, I would suggest on goals that if any of the board members have some ideas for goals that they want, um, possibly added in for the superintendent, that if they could send me their ideas so that that can be discussed at the exec board, which is meeting in January eleven. That would be really, really good. We're going to have those. Okay. Um.
I, I should, I, I should have asked and I apologize when you ask for adjustments. If there's any way, um, Mr. Bazina can go, um, and I would have asked, I should have asked to go before me, especially as you said, the roads were bad. I just was thinking about that.
If he's going north, yeah.
I'd like him back tomorrow.
Henry, you're all right with that?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to let Jim go next, if the board's all right with that.
So I've separated the three schools, middle school.
Chris, did you get a copy of that? Just, um,
And I'll, I'll save.
I have it on a electronic copy, but it's, Jim, if you'll hold on for one for me, a hard copy, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah.
So I just want to just quickly review, uh, some of the summary pages. And I'm looking at page two, which is the middle school. And, um, I'll jump to the bottom and you can see right now we've got, uh, looks like a hundred and ninety-one thousand to the good, which is, all right. A couple of items that I just wanted to point out, and I'm looking at, uh, a quarter of the way down where it says health services, twenty-one thirty-one. And you'll see there's a deficit of twenty-four five eighty-six. That deficit is really because of a miscoding that health teacher was coded in here. So, um, really we have to put that, that health teacher up against that, that ninety-eight zero four zero. Um, the speech services, which is, um, twenty-one fifty-two. And you'll see that it's, it's, uh, a deficit of fifty-four six seventy. No, I, I do want to say that is because there is services, health, uh, speech services to a five oh four student. And, and, um, if you can go back, actually on page, page, uh, page six, quarter of the way down, you'll see twenty-one fifty-two. And it's five oh four speech. And it has a deficit of fifty-three six seventy. Now, again, most of that is encumbered and there's only been seven hundred and thirty-five dollars expended. So, you know, maybe it's a non-issue. What do you think?
It's a lot of money for a speech.
Yes, yes it is. And I don't know. And I, I don't know, um. You know, with Henry and I, we're talking a little bit about trying to clarify and get some on the contracted services piece. Just to get a better handle on, on some of the three hundreds. Just so we can. Kind of drill down on those. Um. I don't see anything else on the, the middle school. I mean, I think it's, it's right in line with what it should be. Um.
The uh, Jim, on the health service, normally that would be the nurse, right?
Yes.
But they, we, we put the nurse plus the health teacher.
Well, we, we shouldn't. I mean, honestly, that health teacher should be in an eleven-hundred.
Yeah.
Function. So it's something that we've gotta square away, but.
But sure, thanks. Uh, the consumer one too. So we've got to get.
No, no, no. So we have a. The teacher who used to be the family consumer science teacher. Morphed at some point really into a health teacher. And so we refer to her as that, to that position as a health physician. And so with her out right now, there's a, a gentleman who's been hired who, who's filling that role. He got miscoded. Into that line. That's, that's what Jim was talking about, you know, that should go up to the teaching line.
Okay, um, any other questions? If not, I'd like to turn to page nine. Which is Central Elementary and um. It's just. The, the detail. For uh Central Elementary's top general education. Is on page ten, which is right behind it. And um. As you can see, I mean, it, it looks like a, a three hundred and ninety-six thousand dollar balance to the good right now. That's unencumbered. And. Other than that, I don't see any issues. I mean, you got, we've got a balance of, of roughly five hundred thousand that is not encumbered at this time. Looks pretty good, Carrie. Okay.
Yeah. It just seems like there's something missing there, you know, because, you know, the, the central. Nine classroom teachers. Uh, there's a, well, guys, it's. The uh. Uh, if you look at, if you look at the uh. But anyway.
Well, I, and I, I agree with you, Jim.
I know, it just seems though. There's uh.
Well, she had some teachers retire that brought salary, they should have brought salary now.
But under general ed, uh, yeah, you add includes the benefits as well. So it's not just salary. It's the benefits.
But the, the bulk of that surplus. Looks to be um salaries. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, alright.
And so.
Well, I hope it's right. I mean, I just, I mean, the way that kind of.
Well, and again, um. If. You know, I've been relying on our, on our e-finance system. It, it would, it would um show all of the contracts and. As we are expending that money through paying payroll, it should remove. Um, then the encumbrance piece. But it's something that I will look into just, just to check.
Right.
We'll see what we've got. Uh.
You had a question whether encumbrances were being correctly done. Uh, uh, not here, but it was somewhere else. Yes.
Yes. Yes, at the SU level. Um. Page fourteen deals with Saxon's River. And. Uh, again, right now, we're, we're twenty-four to the good. Um. In the guidance area. I'm not sure what that. Guidance is on page fifteen. And um. It looks like there was sixty thousand in total for both salary and benefits. And it must be a, a new teacher.
With that fifty-four thousand and. Well.
Oh, yeah.
You got nothing budgeted.
Right, right?
But still, that fifty-bolton off on that.
Yep. And I, I see that, I mean, it looked like there was, the encumbrance for the teacher is there. But as I say, um. Wha- what's hard to look at sometimes is. Just the health insurance. If somebody went from a single. To a family policy, I mean, you're talking twenty-eight thousand. Differential. So. Um, it's something we'll look into. The last piece that I wanna look at. And Chris, you don't have this in your electronic version, but there's a page eighteen A. Now, this deals with the Rockingham. Assessments and debt service. And again, right now, we've got uh just the, the debt service, the principal and bonds. We will pay again in uh May. For the second half. And I do wanna say, under school board, you can see there's a twenty thousand dollar deficit. And if we look on page nineteen, which is right in back. And we look at. Um, the school board. And we can see the, the biggest tag in here is the insurance. When we were. We redid the insurance this year and we had to push it into some accounts that maybe weren't fully covered. So, so these items. Um, really account for that twenty thousand dollars. Uh, additional monies. And some of them, some of them are a contracted service. Ten thousand one ninety-eight. I don't recall what that was.
It's not part of the insurance?
Uh, no.
Is it the audit?
Oh, maybe the audit. Maybe the audit.
Maybe the audit.
Yep. Could be.
And the one, the minus one thirty-eight, that was the early intuition. If under general ed. Right?
Yes.
On uh, on eighteen A.
That was um. Yes, uh, I think that's, that's uh. That is. What we missed and, and I believe the uh. We, we didn't budget for the tuitions or early ed.
Right.
So, yes. So.
If you would point that out. An earlier shot.
So uh. You know, I, I think that we're, we're on course. Don't see any big issues. Um, any questions that I can answer to? You know, I wish, I will say this, I wish we were through the crossover piece with accounts. Cause it's tough, tough to get through each month. And uh, each segment, and I mean, these really are wrinkles that. You know, have to be uh certainly gone over.
When do you expect that to be over, the crossover?
But I, July first, when we start to rebuild. This, this twenty-four budget that you're working on now will be in and all, everything else should align. Because when we're closing out, we will make sure that the, the alignment happens in the twenty-three budget. So you, well, I don't think they'll run into it again. My hope is ever.
I think, I hope, sounds good.
No, this is helpful. It's getting better.
Yeah, well, it's a process, Jim. Process of, we'll just creep along with it. And if, if there's ever any question, you know, after, send me an email and we'll work on clarifying it, getting it squared away.
Caitlin, any questions?
I don't think so.
Chris, any questions?
No, thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Right, Carrie.
Okay, so, thank you for this.
You, Andy? You say it.
And um, principals reports. Um, we'll start with you.
Uh, so as of today here at the middle school, uh, we have fifty-nine fifth graders. Forty-eight sixth graders. Sixty-six seventh graders and sixty-seven eighth graders for a handful of two hundred and forty students. Um. Today, we kind of started off our December rewards for uh this month. It's been a pretty successful month all around, I would say. Grades five through eight. Um, tomorrow, sixth grade are doing their December rewards day. They'll be doing various Chromebook activities, some Lego building challenges and uh bird feeder construction, which is part of the nature-based learning initiative. Seventh grade today went on a field trip uh for their December reward. Those, those uh deserving students went to Keene Ice. Uh, a little bit of public skating for a couple hours today and uh it was reported that it was a, it was a great time. Our eighth graders, uh, they're studying laws of motion. So it's kind of been tied in with kind of like a reward, but also more so an educational reward. Um. They started today, they were watching uh Home Alone and discussing uh the different laws of motion and things that Kevin did to uh stop the burglars. Uh, which was pretty cool. It was a great class to sit in on and everything went well and was tied together. And I feel like all the students definitely obviously bought into. The movie piece that uh Miss News opened together um as part of this laws of motion unit. Uh, I kind of touched base on it last time at the board meeting, but uh Jen Gravino officially started as our new admin assistant on December fifth. So that was two weeks ago today and it's uh, it's been a smooth transition and she's been a great addition to the team. Um, I also wanted to mention that since our last board meeting, uh Carrie Newton was uh in the acting beam of students for the remainder of the school year. Um, so we've already hit the ground running and it's been nice to kind of delegate some duties and have a little bit of uh help with our discipline team. Um. Also to obviously working with the RP room still um as, as a big helper here at the middle school. And last but certainly not least, I wanted to thank you, Priscilla, for the nice card and cookies, for the B F M S staff today. I was very thoughtful and I know that the staff definitely appreciated it. So, thank you. The staff, if there's any questions.
Okay, I guess. Uh, Carrie? Do you wanna go next?
Sure, sorry, just said to unmute.
That's okay.
Okay. Let me just pull this up. So, good evening, everyone. Central has been very busy as always and everybody else is too. Uh, we do have a hundred and forty-two students to report. We have uh thirty-two in kindergarten. We have twenty-nine in first grade, nineteen in second grade, thirty-four in third grade and twenty-eight in fourth grade.
Carrie, could you repeat that? Yeah, I apologize.
No problem. Let me just go back up. We have thirty-two in kindergarten. Twenty-nine in first. Nineteen in second. Thirty-four in third grade and twenty-eight in fourth grade. And unfortunately for the month of December, average daily attendance was down to eighty-six percent. We have several students out for long-term um illnesses and then we also have some regular right now, just flu, COVID. Typical winter illnesses sadly that are adding up. So. We are working to continue to spray down all surfaces and hopefully looking forward to the break to ensure that there's better sanitized, even more so, and have a break from all of the germs for everything. But. I do wanna thank Ken Lawrence for all his hard work on keeping the building clean and sanitized. He's really worked hard to keep that going right now. And then also huge thank you to Nurse Jen. Uh, Burke, Millie Berry, your assistant and for monitoring the symptoms and providing support to our students and families. It's not always a fun office, but they do provide care with a smile. So we thank them for that. Uh, I also wanna thank the after-school staff. This was their week that they're getting ready for the transition into the new year. So I apologize to the families because we don't have programming today and tomorrow. Um, and then there's a half-day Wednesday, just to remind everybody, but they will be ready to take all the students back in January and shifting into the new programming. So we thank the after-school staff. Heather Murphy Hicks has really done a great job of leading them and everybody has done a fabulous job of keeping our extended day going. I also do my quick shout-out to huge uh Millie Berry and Carrie Pickering and Kelly Green and all of the volunteers, Priscilla included. Who helped us do our shopping mall for the fifteenth of December. We had so many donations and volunteers and the students were so excited to be able to shop for their families. So we were glad to bring that back. It was a fun tradition. And a huge thank you to Chroma, the Elks, the Rotary, Parks Place and so many community members who are supporting us with our students and families. Um, we've had a lot of gifts coming in. We've had turkeys coming in, socks, underwear, winter gear, you name it. And we do. Really rely on the support of our community partners. So we thank them so much for all of their help for that. Report cards, we're going home today. They were supposed to go home on Friday, but we had no school for the snow day Friday. So. They were being sent out today. We did hold family conferences back in uh November, just prior to Thanksgiving. So hopefully we've had a chance to meet most everybody now. Um, and catch up with family. So thank you for that. We are continuing with our nature-based learning and our Woods Wednesdays. Sometimes it's on Tuesdays, but the students in thirds and fourth grade. Uh, get to go out and have a chance. They go to the rec center into the woods behind there. They've gone to the pinnacle. Um, we have some more trips planned and it's been a great chance for them to get outside and to learn to appreciate how to dress for the weather in Vermont too. So it's been great for having them. Come back in with a nice rosy cheeks and learning a lot outside. Our farm-to-school continues with the harvest of the month. We have a taste testing each month. Um, and then just all the typical teaching and learning about healthy foods and nutrition. So. Our Food Connects coach Jenny Kessler has done a great job of keeping everybody on track on our schedules. Uh, Kate Kane and Meredith Harvey in the second grade are doing a great job. Jody Hauser, Peter Laurie, Erica Frank and um the team is really. Moving the students along and they're trying. We just had sun soup, which was butternut squash soup, but we called it sun soup and had some more students try that. So that was fabulous. We are right now in the process of finalizing our winter sports programming. Uh, we will have students who'll be swimming at Edgar Mae. We're going ice skating, cross-country skiing, and then some sledding and tubing. So forms will be sent home to families prior to the event. So we look forward to having everybody participate. We also are coming up after the holidays. We have uh the New Hampshire Dance Institute. The second week of January, we have a family event. So save the date at the high school on January twelfth. We're pretty sure at six P M. We wanna confirm that. Um, but there'll be more details coming in. So all of the students like circus last year will have a chance to participate in a dance program. Um, and then we'll have a final one and they even have a staff dance coming up. So be ready for that. So we have our fourth installment of the responsive classroom two training coming up for staff on January seventeenth. We're excited to have that. And pretty much just ready to gear up for the holidays. We thank all of our staff for their hard work and dedication and we wanna wish everybody a happy, healthy holiday season. Any questions or comments?
Chris, anything? Hey Caitlin?
No.
Jim?
Also.
Yeah, I wanted to say that I thoroughly enjoyed being able to wrap presents. I went as a women's. Club member to wrap presents last um week and it was exciting. And the children were absolutely thrilled to be able to get those, those gifts. And I know you do it at, at Central and I know you also do it at Saxon Service. So. Just a wonderful, fantastic program for our children. Thank you.
Great. And thank you to everybody. We even had enough to give the students let pick themselves out a present too at the end. So most of them were able to pick a book or a little stuffed animal. So it was lovely.
Uh, Laura?
Hello, everyone. Uh, we have seventy-six students, fourteen in kindergarten, fourteen in first grade. Seventeen in second grade, fifteen in third grade, and sixteen in fourth grade. Um, our attendance year-to-date is ninety-two point seven percent this past month. Um, ninety point six percent with a high of ninety-seven point four and a low of eighty point five. Uh, like Carrie mentioned, um, we have a lot of illness um going around at this time. Um, other, you mentioned the white elephant sale. Ours was uh very successful, too. I want to thank our community for your donations to the sale. Uh, your kindness certainly put smiles on our students' faces and warmed our hearts. Uh, on November twenty eighth, Mark Moody came to Saxon's River to do a safety audit. He'll be traveling around to all the schools. He spent two hours with me and another two hours with our head custodian, Bart Lawrence. And we look forward to getting his report sometime in January. Uh, first trimester report cards went home Thursday prior to the snowstorm, the snow day and snowstorm, really. Um, and on Thursday as well, our students in our after-school program under the direction of Trish from Main Street Arts performed Why Do Mosquitoes Buzz in People's Ear? Uh, which is a West African tale. Uh, they did this for the whole school at the end of the day. Um, and then again for families uh later on in the afternoon. It was fantastic, and we look forward to collaborating with M S A again. Um, our win, our what I need time, uh, school-wide focus for January through June will be fluency. Um, we're going to start with reading fluency, January through March, and we've assessed all students in form groups, so we can begin as soon as we return in January. And we plan to build in uh performances so that students can share their growth with the school. As well as to further develop their speaking and listening skills. We'll we'll also be doing, of course, a post-assessment um that will take place uh the week of March twentieth. December twenty first is an early release day, um, and we have planned for the students a special performance in the morning, and it's also PJ Day, so it should be a fun um way to end the calendar year. Chroma delivered gifts for families in need today. Um, a truly amazing coordination of kindness, goodwill, and generosity. Um, on behalf of the families served, thank you to Chroma. Thank you too to Jigs McCalliff and members of um the Emmanuel Episcopal Church in Bellas Falls for providing twenty fifty-dollar elite fifty-dollar lease-size gift. Gift cards to Rockingham families in need. With the rising cost of food and given the holidays, I know these gift cards will tremendously help our families, so thank you. And a winter sports eight update for Saxon's River. We are just about ready to go. Students have signed up. Paperwork's been completed and are now forming ski and snowboard groups. Um, S R S, our S R S students will participate for six weeks, either swimming at Edgar May or skiing, snowboarding, or or skating at Okemo. Um, and a big thank you to Parks Place for providing a few families with partial scholarships, and also to our P T O for funding the balance. Um, looking ahead. Um, as you know, our December recess is coming up. School resume zooms on January third, and our first day of winter sports is January tenth. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Laura. Thank you to all our principals for their reports. Really enjoy hearing those. Um, and next is policy, uh, because of um. Not having meetings this week, if possible, we needed to have our Rockingham one, but the other meetings are not happening this week. So we are putting up our policy committee until um one in January to be able to let boards concentrate on budget and do do that.
Could I just give a um an update on the pre-k, just with numbers, just so you have them a quick? Sure.
Absolutely.
So there's sixty-two Rockingham preschool. Schoolers enrolled in the U P K, that's the universal pre-k. And down two since last, since November first. Um, thirty-six Rockingham preschoolers are currently in community programs. Uh, receiving the U P K tuition funding, which is uh three thousand six hundred fifty-six dollars per child per year. And Rockingham U P K tuition um for fiscal year twenty-three predicted total is. One hundred and thirty-two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents. So today. Uh, there's twenty-six Rockingham preschoolers in. Our S U early ed program. Sixteen attend our um our classroom that C E S. Um, there's seventeen students enrolled there, sixteen of them are Rockingham students. And then there are ten uh students at the Westminster Center.
Any questions for Andy on that? Okay, um.
Could I just interject for a second and? And I would um point out that historically, that number of Rockingham students. Attending the Westminster site is very unusual. That that really is uh. Not something we encountered. At least very often in the past. Just saying.
Thank you for that info, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, um, no business. Um, the C two student alcohol and drugs policy was posted on twelve sixth. Um, and you should have also received a copy of that. Are are there any questions about that?
I will approve uh policy C two student alcohol and drug.
Okay, um. And I don't think there's any discussion, so Caitlin, how do you vote? Yeah, uh, Chris?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay. And D six was the class size policy and procedure. We kind of discussed that a little bit um when we were. Um, going to be going over that, and it's. Pretty straightforward from what we had in the past. It's just updated slightly with new uh with definitions that they had at the state. And making sure that we included um things that were in our old policy. So.
Are the numbers the same on that, Priscilla, basically?
We kept, we kept the numbers that were in there before, yes, the uh we didn't change that at all. Which was Rockingham would have um for K two is a minimum of. Average of fourteen and an optimal average range of fourteen to nineteen. Three, four is uh minimum average of fifteen and an optimal range of fifteen to twenty. Five, six is uh minimum average of fifteen and an optimal average range of fifteen to twenty-three. Seven, eight is minimum average twenty, optimal range twenty to twenty-four, and seven, eight. Um, for P E is minimum average of twenty and an optimal range of twenty to thirty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I will.
Okay, Jigs' move approval, is there? Any other discussion? If not, uh Caitlin, how do you vote? Yeah, um, Chris?
Yes.
It's, and I hope yes, that's passed. Okay. All business for discussion. We're going to skip the student assessment results. Remember, we'll postpone that to the next meeting. The teacher scheduled subjects and attendance were given out last time. Jigs, did you get a um? A cop paper copy on that, or can you still?
I did know.
Well, so that was confusion at my office because. When I asked. What I was supposed to bring. Um, I was told that it was what I recently sent out, which was what I handed. Jigs today, which is the teacher list, and I. Um, I think the uh. I know Nicole was there, and so I think Melissa just wasn't exactly sure, but when I kept asking, we're talking about the teacher schedules. We're talking about the, and so we went back and forth, but I can um.
The other.
I I'll get to you before. I mean, that's that's it's.
The other thing is I have mine and we can copy it, that copy machine, which we have tonight. It's up to you.
I'm glad that we've got it. I think the uh. It probably took a lot of work, I think. The the name of the game would be the simplify. It's just the. Almost like. I can see a one-page maker, you know.
I I don't, I I tried to do that, and I was told to give the schedules, the raw schedules, so I don't, I. I mean. If if you'd like us to put it all on one page, and and I guess.
No, that's okay.
But what, no, I I I and I I'm I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand, because we did put it on one page, but. It didn't have like when their prep periods were and things like that. If that's what you're looking for, we can add that into that one page. Uh, it might have been two pages, but. You, is that what you're looking for? It's like, when are their prep periods and?
Well, you know, the the uh. What was, what was confusing was. You know, when you got to the. After the middle of the day. It was with like blocks, it was. Five, six, seven, and eight or something like.
So they they.
I think this.
I I I'm gonna have you try and explain, because it is, it's a schedule issue here, so.
Right, yeah, so it's because we basically have our our fifth and sixth grade run on the same time schedule, and then we have our seven and eight that run on the same time schedule that's different from the five, six.
Yeah.
So because of the lunches being the twenty-five-minute walks. We end up having like calling the one, that one period for fifth and sixth period, six, seven. Where for seven, which is basically going one through five, lunch would technically be like their sixth period and then seven. So it's kind of like the little chunk is there. Nature is the way that it goes.
You know, which does make it a little confusing.
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping to clean that up.
Hard to rest on.
Understand, so. For me to understand.
And then add purple and white days.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's a, that's another piece that I tried to. In the, in the um. The spreadsheet version, basically, was to not get into, because there's like, you might have sixteen kids on a purple day, but you know, but on a white day, you might have thirteen kids. Because those three other kids went somewhere else, and they're in someone else's, like. It's. Yeah, it's not, it's never twenty, that's the. And and then, as Henry said, I think that the fact that. You got fifth and six trying to operate. Similar to an elementary-type schedule.
Yeah.
And then you've got. Seven and eight that's operating more of a high school-type schedule, you know, where they're more content-driven, and then trying to figure out all your specials to put it, you know. I used to have smarter people do it for me.
Looking for that.
Yeah, no, I know, it's 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 a challenge, so.
Yeah, I I guess anything that makes it, it's easy to depend for us to understand because it's really helpful. But I do appreciate, I know I tried to get all all of the ones I had, and I looked at them, and. Yeah, I know there's a lot of work there during that. Any other questions on teacher schedules or subjects? Until next time. Okay, we'll put that on for next time as well. Okay, um, job description for acting dean of students.
So my my, that kind of, be honest, and I know you and I hadn't had a chance to connect, uh, Priscilla. When my understanding was. That Chris had asked at the budget meeting for a job description for the proposed position. Not on the acting position, but it would be very similar, I mean, um, in 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 those things, so what we provided you is what we would project that someone would be um. That position would would hold. Uh, my hope. Is that Carrie will not be serving in that role. For the remainder of the school. I mean, that that was a. That's a stock gap positioning right now, so. Um, but um, I mean, I. What we provided, make me go over it if you'd like me to.
I didn't see it. I missed, yes, I missed it. Jigs said he saw it.
I looked, certainly, it looked okay to me.
I apparently missed missed it when I was.
No, Nicole, uh, it's all started out today.
On today, okay, I didn't get to check everything today.
Three, three thirty-two. But uh. I mean, I thought it read. When uh it was, it was kind of consistent with what I would have expected to be.
Yeah, it, I mean, it's um, you know, what what we. Would expect is is that that position would be someone who worked much more closely with um, you know, teachers, but also in supporting um students um in doing those things, so. Um. You know, I think that. One of the things I heard uh pretty loud and clear from the board um. What at the budget meeting was. That really would be a huge impact on on um. On the budget at this time, um, so. In our next version, um, with our proposal for the high school budget, we're not going to be involved with that position, as you know. Uh, I think it's it's up for discussion of. You know. Based on when we, when we have some. Permanency of what we know we're going to do for next year is to, you know. Would that position, if we were to look at a potential with a P S R fund. Uh, position be something to see, would that help with? Again. Dealing with supervision, dealing with student supervision, dealing with um. The assessment piece and really addressing it and utilizing that piece right now um to get data. Like you're saying, before we come and propose a full. Uh, position, so that's something we, we just haven't had a chance to everyone sit down and have that conversation yet to to look at it, but um, so. So it it won't be a position that we will be requesting from our local budget for next year, so.
That helps, that gives us.
Yeah, I I mean, I just, yeah, so.
More information. Okay, um. And I guess I put in acting thinking that, you know, we wanted something as to what the person that we were. Kind of putting in now, doing what what was happening with that, is why I. Listed it that way. And I know Bill had asked at the last meeting, Chris had answered. Want to be sure that we didn't let it go by the wayside. Okay, so do we have any other questions on that? I will look at, yeah, it says three thirty-two. I think I, last time I looked at it, it was at three thirty, so I probably just barely guessed that, sorry. Any questions? Okay, all right, um, we'll do director's comments next, and then do executive session on that. Um, Caitlin, I'll start with you tonight.
Um. I don't, I don't think I have any. Thank you all. I guess, okay, I I will, I do have some, I guess, just to thank you all for all of the hard work. I know this is such a crazy time of year to try and get everything together, and I appreciate you all giving such thorough retorts, and I hope everybody really has a chance to recharge over the break.
Thank you. Uh, Chris?
Uh, just a happy new year and happy holidays, and. Big thanks to all of our staff and administrators or teachers who are. Working so hard, giving our kids a good education. Really appreciate it. Uh, it's a tough job. We know.
Thanks, Chris. Jim?
I would just, you know, like. Colleagues comments. For sure, with all the, and it's a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a joyous occasion for many, but it's a. It's not a joyous occasion for others, and. Uh, I think it's important for all of us to keep that in mind.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, I thank all of our, and Bill is in Germany at the moment, so we'll think of him enjoying the beautiful scenery there. He's working part of the time he's there. Um, so we miss him. But I just really appreciate every one of you and all the thoughtful things that you do and all the considerations that. You do for our community and to make them and uphold them in all kinds of ways. And as we work. Our way forward on the budget and kind of balance out the taxpayer needs and the school needs. It's it's a tough thing to be doing, but um, everybody's working really hard on that and being really cognizant of both sides of the issues, so I really appreciate that as well. And just that kindness, it is a tough time of year for some people. Um, those that are missing their loved ones, those that are without um a family member or are. In dire straits for one reason or another, so um, anything we can do to support them or help them make. in dire straits for one reason or another, so, um, anything we can do to support them or help them, make them feel better is just worthwhile. It comes back so many ways to you when you give, so just remember that magic of Christmas and the magic of the holidays, um, any different ones that you celebrate. And, thank you. I would say, I set the meeting is, it's set on here for, I'm gonna do that before it's set for, because that way it's mentioned in case we don't have anything to do afterwards. Um, January third two thousand twenty-three, it's a Tuesday, if that's okay with the other board members, because Monday is still a holiday as far as our schools are going, and no one is back at that time, so if we could move it to January third, and we may want to start a little earlier that day, because it will be a budget session, and I know everybody, all the board members have mentioned that they thought they could come earlier. Jim, do you have a, a conflict with, with the, the other board you're on?
No.
No, okay, so that would be, um, I'm thinking maybe if we could start about four o'clock, would that work for people? I'm seeing this.
It's okay, really.
Okay, so let's set that for four o'clock. Alright, and then I would entertain a motion to go into a session to discuss a personnel matter. Now.
Uh, I'll move it, um, so move that the board go into executive dis, executive session to discuss a personnel matter, prior knowledge of which could place either the board or the individual involved at a disadvantage.
And do we, and we wanna invite?
Uh, inviting the superintendent, anyone else coming? I'm not sure who's coming on this.
I think anyone else, or can we let the principals go?
Yeah, let the principals go.
Okay, alright, so we'll invite Andy. So Chris can be motioned to enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter where prior public knowledge could place the board and/or individuals at a disadvantage, and invite the superintendent. Okay, Andy, just let them. Hey, how do you vote? Yes. Okay, otherwise.
Yes.
Yeah.